Okay, well, it's six o'clock where I am. It means it's seven o'clock back home. So let's kick this thing off. Let's just start with the Pledge of Allegiance, even though I don't have a flag behind me. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands one nation under God. Okay, well, the purpose of this meeting is to interview candidates to replace the town council position vacated because Nick Meyer was unable to fill out his term. The meeting, the position was posted on the website, also as mentioned at at least two town council meetings. Wait a minute. So I want to make it so I believe we have eight candidates left. We had 10 and two have dropped out. I want to make it clear before we start the meeting that to be a town council member, you do have to be a resident of Michigan City or of Long Beach, and you have to be a registered voter in Long Beach. So are there any of the candidates who do not meet that criterion?
Bob, can you clarify that? I understood to run for election, you had to be a registered voter, but you're appointing a resident, a property owner to this vacated board seat. And I understood because it's an appointment that you could appoint a property owner who might not be. If I ran for election, I understand I'd have to be a elected or a registered voter, and my residency would have to be there. The reason I ask is I'm in transition of changing my residency to Long Beach, and I maintain two homes, one because I needed to still go back to Rush Hospital. But I'm in the process of making my permanent residency here. And I threw my name in under the understanding that it's an appointment and I'm not running for election. Can you clarify that?
Actually, I can't, but Chris probably can. Chris?
Well, and in addition to my research and making sure that everybody who's on the same page is speaking with co-council for the state election board, because the town and the nature of this appointment, this is kind of one of those tweener gray areas. So what I want to make clear, and then I will get to your point, is it isn't the town council's charge or purview to worry about residency or who's voted or who's properly qualified. I know as odd as that sounds, that's what the election laws are for and the requirements. Now, I will say what the state election board will have the opinion that you should be qualified as any candidate that runs for election. I don't know if I agree with that, but again, it's by per because most of the laws are written, and as I was reminded, the election laws are written for the two major political parties, not for this circumstance. And so do I think that all of the does everything that is written applicable to this situation, I do not believe it is. However, the town council, I have not advised them, and I'm not going to give that opinion, nor can I give any of you legal advice. It is so Dr. Lemay's statement with regard to you should be prepared. And if whoever is selected is going to be required to take an oath and qualify, and if ever challenged or taken to task on that, those are the things that you could have to answer to. So that's all I can do. I don't know that you're misform, but it isn't simply just appointing. There are requirements and the state election board, early on, at least discussions were that if anybody were ever to be challenged, they're going to hold any appointee as if to the standard that they needed to meet the electable officials' requirements.
Okay, I appreciate that. And with that being said, I will take this as an opportunity to thank you. I don't want to belabor and waste your time. You do have my CV. And just out of video introduction, I am going to be here in Long Beach for long term. You'll see me in some capacity again. And to the board members, I hope in some manner I can support you. I do know that there are some other board positions if you need someone to fill it. As I said, you have my CV. I have a pretty strong background. So I'll bow out of this interview process. I might stay on just to listen in and wish all good luck. But I don't, I don't want to push this issue of residency versus non on an appointment. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, John. It's nice to meet you. And I'm sure we'll be seeing you again.
I promise you will. And as I say, a board position, we can talk.
Okay. And as John, John mentioned, I did send an email to all the candidates asking for their CVs. I've received from most of them, not from everybody else. So any of the candidates here who haven't sent a CV, if you sent it, send it to me. I will make sure and make sure that the town council members get it. I might think the plan is that the election or our election, our vote isn't going to take place until the special meeting on the 25th. So you still have time to get that CV in between now and then. So I think, as I explained in the email, I think the way we'll handle this, since we have seven candidates, which isn't as bad as 10, it's still quite a few. I said that we'll have everybody give a ended some introductory comments lasting between one and two minutes. With that being said, we'll go in alphabetical order. Sunny Billups, are you out there? Going once, going twice. Sunny Billups?
I don't see her, Bob.
Okay, I'm going to cross that off the list then.
Okay.
Julie Doyle, you are next. Julie Doyle, are you out there?
I just might suggest you check your, you might have to let people in to the.
Yeah, no, they've all been entered.
I don't see her, Bob, either.
Julie, if you're out there and somehow we can't hear you, raise your hand.
Or she could call one of us.
Yeah, or Sunny Billups, you could raise your hand if you're out there too. Okay. Next up is Kevin Flemington. Oh, come on. Kevin Flemington.
I don't like us, Bob.
Let me see. This is, this process is getting easier and easier, I have to admit.
I know.
Kevin Flemington, going once, calling twice. Okay, well, I'm down to four candidates. Next is Mike Johnstone. I think I saw you out there, Mike.
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, everybody. Shall I just go ahead and proceed, Bob?
Yes.
All right. First of all, I just, and you probably, a lot of you know this already, but Lisa and I have been homeowners in Long Beach for 19 years. We actually became full-time residents approximately two years ago. My work experience, I'm a retired banker. I was in the industry for 48 years. The last 22, I held the position of Chief Executive Officer of two separate banks. One TCF Bank Illinois, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of TCF Financial, which is based in Minneapolis. Was CEO of that organization, a $3.5 billion financial institution, 250 branches. I then moved in 2007 over to Beverly Bank and Trust, which is a South Side Chicago institution, billion three in assets, a wholly owned subsidiary of Wintrust Financial Corporation. And so that's my synopsis of my work experiences. On the community side, I spent 25 years on the March of Dimes Chicago Board. I held the positions of Illinois Chapter Chair at one point. Also held the position of the Chicago Division Chair. A great opportunity for me. As we were transitioning to Long Beach, and I knew this, I wanted to get involved with some organizations within our respective community. And one that I chose was Boys and Girls Club of Leport County. I've been on that board now for six years. My strategy has worked. I've met a lot of people, made a lot of contacts because of that opportunity. I just came off my two-year term as Board President for the club. And we're about ready to launch a capital campaign to expand the club beyond Michigan City and throughout Leport County. So we're excited about that. You'll hear more about that as we move down the road. So the, what do I have to offer? And I think, in my, this is my opinion, I think I've got extensive financial and leadership experience, both in the work and in the community service area. And number two, I have a true sense, in my opinion, a true sense of community and believe in the community. And we obviously fell in love at Long Beach 19 years ago, made that financial commitment to buy a home. And the plan was always for us to be here on a permanent basis. So that would conclude my remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, I think what we'll do is we'll do all the questions after everybody's given their opening remarks. And I think, you know, given the fact that we're down to four candidates, maybe what we ought to do, I was originally saying we should probably ask questions to individuals, but maybe in the interest of fairness, we should ask questions and then all four can answer. Does that sound reasonable to everybody on the town council?
Sure.
I think that might be fair. Okay, so next four comments is Zach Neff.
Yes, Bob. My name is, as he said, Zach Neff. I'm me and my wife of 17 years. We've been permanent Long Beach residents for a little over two years now, living at 2312 Foxdale Trail. And I really appreciate the town council for considering me for this position. Mike's talked about his work a little bit. So I've been with the same company ever since I graduated college, been with Sunoco Products. I'm the International Engineering Manager for that company. And I do a lot of plant startups, plant acquisitions, kind of on a global scale. So, so I do, I do spend some time in Long Beach. My home office is above my garage, so I watch you guys walk by on Foxdale. And then when I'm not here, I'll be in various locations across the US or possibly global. So the residents of Long Beach who have been involved with the community, you guys already know who I am, and maybe without even knowing my name. I'm always around the town with my dogs, walking the dogs, riding my bike, I'm walking on the beach, and I'm outside working on my yard. So I'm pretty visible around the town. My wife and I, we really fell in love with Long Beach after renting a home down near Stop 11 back in 2015. We took a walk up here, talked to a few people, and that was that. So we really enjoy the beauty, the quaintness, and the unrestricted access to the beaches. And one of the main reasons why we made the move from Chicago to Long Beach was to have that sense of community that Mike was talking about. That's something you don't really see when you live in the downtown area of Chicago, which is where we've been for 11 years prior. So we wanted to know our neighbors, we wanted to be involved with the town and to help maintain the beauty of the community that we fell in love with. So within the months of closing our home, within just a few months, really, I became an active member in the Parks and Recreation Board. And if you follow the Parks and Recreation Board Facebook page, you've seen my picture on there. I do all the posting. I manage most of the content on that site. I'm on the Police Advisory Commission, and thankfully, we haven't really had to do much of anything since I was appointed to that position. I come to almost all the town council meetings, either in person or on Zoom. I'm at Building Commission meetings quite often, and I come to the building zoning appeal meetings every so often as well. So my point in saying all of that is I'm already very much involved with the community. I've got a reputation, I believe, of getting, getting things done. I've, I've got a project management background and engineering background. I'm pragmatic in my approach. I'm not political. You know, I just feel like there's a right way to do things. There's a way that makes sense. And I'm all ears, and let's talk about how we get that done. I think I've got a lot to offer the council. And I just appreciate that the council members trust in my ability to continue to serve the town as I've done for, for over four years now. And thank you for your consideration.
All right, next up, Anita Remigius.
Sorry, I'm unmuting. Good evening, Anita Remigius, 2300 Floramont. You have my CV, which lists my legal, political, philanthropic background, extensive over the years. And I'm ready and prepared to serve out the remainder of Nick's term. 14 short months ago, we had a town election. There were 10 individuals who chose to run for the five open council seats. The first five vote-getters were certified the winners. Long Beach residents selected as the sixth top vote-getter Kathleen Salmon-Baylor. She is not seeking this vacancy. Long Beach residents selected me as the seventh top vote-getter, and I do seek to serve this vacancy. At the time of the election, I was committed to the town. I remain committed. I still am involved in the governance. I continue to serve on the Advisory Plan Commission, and I now also serve on the Park Board. Prior to the election, I continue, and still, I continue to attend council meetings, Building Commission meetings, occasional water board meetings, BZA meetings. I remain committed to protecting our beaches and our beach rights. I remain committed to sound fiscal responsibility. And once COVID restrictions are lessened, continued usage of the community center along with the guidance and working with the Community Center Committee. Members of the town council, I know you can stand behind the rules and, as you are allowed, choose the person you want to serve out Nick's term. Or you can stand beside the votes of the Long Beach residents and out of a sense of fairness and openness in government, afford me the opportunity to serve as the voters wanted. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay, and last but not least, Stefanos Rizos.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Stefanos Rizos. Thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to introduce myself tonight for the vacancy on the Long Beach Town Council. I'm born and raised Hoosier from the region here in Northwest Indiana. My undergraduate was IU School of Medicine and IU undergrad. After medical education, went to Grand Rapids where I trained in obstetrics and gynecology and did a year of general surgery. When I finished my training in 1996, I moved back to the region where I got my first job here in Michigan City with the Medical Group of Michigan City. And that is when I first bought my home was in 1996. After two years, I parted ways with the group and ended up in Hobart Portage area, opened my solo practice, which was outside of my restricted covenant radius. In 2005, I transferred my practice to Franciscan Health in Crown Point, where I've been practicing there up until the end of the year during the time I lived here in town. There was a small detour back in 2002 to 2003 for a year when I had gotten married. But that's not important for this. At that's, at the start of the year, I relocated my practice here to Michigan City to be closer to home, and my parents, who are elderly and who live with me, need some assistance. Since living here in town, I had always wanted to be part of the town's governance. With the move locally, that would allow me time to partake in the duties as a council member if selected. My experience is vast, from starting my own medical practice and running my business, as well as being part of the medical staff leadership in Franciscan Health, Crown Point, where I was Medical Staff President, Chairman of the Credentials Committee, Chairman of the Performance Physician Performance Improvement Committee, as well as Surgical Department Chair. As President of the Medical Staff, I spearheaded bylaws reform, where the bylaws which govern the medical staff were completely revamped and also went corporate wide. During that time, I also revamped the policies and procedures for the Physician Performance Improvement Committee and improved its processes. I believe my experience and training will help in the process of being part of the team and helping with the governance of this great and beautiful town of ours, which I fell in love with since way before even purchasing a home here back in 96. But since my teen years, when I first got my driver's permit and my license, and on the Sunday nights, I would drive out here with my dad, go up and down Lakeshore Drive after we got an ice cream with the Dairy Queen, and stop at the water pumping station and overlook the lake. You know, and I dreamed at that time, you know, it'd be, I want to be a physician and like to have a home here overlooking this great body of water, Lake Michigan. And I was fortunate to have realized my dream. So I hope you can see the influence and impact the town has had on me since I was a teenager, and how much this town means to me today and into the future. Again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to have introduced myself tonight.
Okay, thanks, all four of you. So at this point, I think we'll have the town council members ask questions. And again, I think we'll have all four of the candidates answer the questions. In the interest of fairness and in terms of order, I think what I'm going to do is start with the number two person, go down the list, and then the next question will start with number three and so on. So town council members and then candidates, if we could limit the answers again to, I would say one to two minutes.
John, are you, are you thinking that we'll, each of, each of the council members will ask one question, and then all four candidates will answer the same question? Is that where you're going?
I'm thinking whoever wants to ask questions from the town council can, and then all four candidates will answer the questions. But we want to, again, limit the response, and I'd say no more than two minutes again, just so we get to go home at some point tonight. Although I guess we are all home, so maybe that's not such an issue. But anyway, we want to get done at some point. So town council members, you have any questions that you want to ask the candidates?
I'll start off one question with all the candidates. What do you see as the biggest area of concern for our town here in the next 18 months?
And Zach, we're going to start with you this time.
All right, get myself unmuted there. You know, I'm a little biased to this because of the, because of the board that I'm on right now. But I think one of the biggest issues we've got is getting our beachfront fixed. The stops that are now out of commission and nearly took over some of our homes and took over Lakeshore Drive. There's an awful lot of work going on there. And being in project management for most of my life and engineering most of my life, it's apparent how much is going to be going on there in the next 18 months to shore up the issues we've got on our stops. And that's the selling point of the town. That's why most people are probably here and why most people are going to be here in the future. So getting that fixed in a way that doesn't damage the beaches east and west of the stops, I think is hugely important. You know, next on the list would be the getting the sewers fixed, but that's not what you asked me. So I, you know, that's, that's my answer, John, would be let's get the, let's get the beaches and the shoreline fixed.
Thank you.
Okay, Anita?
Hi there, sorry. I agree with Zach, beaches are huge. The Building Commission interests me greatly, not only what they're doing, how they're going about it, and making sure that any ordinances that we have in effect are followed. And if they're not followed, that there are procedures in place. And to that extent, we have town council, we have a police department, a new police chief. And I think that we just need to make sure that we protect the town, whether that's through our commissions, through legal avenues, through the police. I know that, you know, I sit on the Advisory Plan Commission. We are always looking at the Shoreline Protection Act. And that's kind of what I see as our areas of concern right now, keeping our town how it is and making sure that we protect it and its assets as best we can.
Okay, Stefanos.
Yes, my, my major concern and drive would be the sewer project that's been talked about to come down Lakeshore Drive, whether that should be something that we should go forward with or help the individuals that have septic systems get re, refixed and grandfather them in versus spending a large sum of money down the road for a sewer line. And I understand there's, there's a whole litany of issues with who's going to pay for it? Will be the town, will be Lakeshore Drive residents? That still is up in the air, but that's my main concern and my, one of my issues that I want to address as a council member.
And Mike?
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to be the number four person here because I agree with everything that's already been said in terms of the, of the lake and the sewer systems. You know, and all this comes back to the issues involving infrastructure within the town. And I think there's another component to this, which isn't, again, where's the money coming from? How are we balancing this thing? Do we have sufficient funds to do all the things we need to do? So, you know, separate and apart from the subsidization from our residents, they're obviously going to be picking up the tab on, significant amount of the tab on the sewer systems. But I think the biggest challenge is the lake. We all worry about it. Anybody who's been here when it was full beach and where it is today is a frightening situation. And it's one that I think the town council's done an excellent job on so far. And I just think there has to be a continuance of efforts to, to, to work on that particular issue. But I'm in favor of the sewers, and I'm in favor of the direction that we're taking with the beach.
Okay, thanks. All right, anybody else on the town council with a question? John, well?
You know, our town over the decades, I happen to just be one of these guys that's been around here a long time, so I've seen a lot of transition. We seem to be heading toward a resort community more so now than ever. There's lots of different variables involved in that transition. I guess I'd ask the candidates, where they stand on, I mean, obviously, been, been here a long time. I look at, you know, there's some threats in terms of the aesthetic for the community and the size of homes that are being built. You know, we've been discovered by people with significant money now. And I've got a guy down the street from me with six lots and a tasteful but huge compound. Where would you stand on, on the future of the town relative to zoning control over the kind of growth that we're experiencing currently?
And first up is Anita.
Hi, everybody. John, I'm familiar with a lot that I know you're talking about. And it's been there for a bit, not a long time, but you're, but it's something that the Advisory Plan Commission is talking about. And how do you limit size? It's something that our legal counsel is helping guide us with. If you buy up six lots, what can you build? What can you build on it? Are we protected by our, by our height ordinances? Are we protected by our ordinances? Do we have enough? Are we overstepping? Can we keep our town financially feasible? I know that Bob Lemay talks about young families. I'm not even sure if it's just young families. Can we keep it affordable for families and make it fun to go to the beach? I, I have, I live in a neighborhood where, where we all know one another, and that's what I love. I mean, I grew up in a neighborhood like that. I lived in a neighborhood like that in Illinois for 30 years. And I, I want to keep it that way. That, to me, is, is what I love about the town. So I'll continue to serve on the Advisory Plan Commission. I'll continue to get to know my neighbors. I will continue to speak out and say hello. And I will help however I can.
Good. Stefanos?
Yes. You know, I, I think it was about 15 years ago or so, we had a questionnaire that came out for the town and a vision that everyone had for a town. And there was a whole body of work done about how the town should proceed forward. And that was never obtained. That was thrown to the side. You know, and all this goes back to the zoning board, things that were allowed to be built. I mean, we haven't followed the vision of the town. And I've talked to other residents, and they remember it. And they said, whatever happened to it? We're not going back to what we wanted. And we're not moving forward appropriately. Now, I think the BZA has to tighten up a little bit with variances that shouldn't be given. Just because you can build on a piece of land doesn't mean you build on it, even if you're outside the variance. And that's what seems to be happening a lot of times. So I mean, I think we have the rules in place. We're just not following them. We're breaking our own rules.
And Mike?
Well, the thing that struck Lisa and me when we discovered Long Beach was in general, the love of the aesthetics of the community itself. Not a trap home development. All the homes were built over a period of time. Our house was built in 1939. And large homes are not a new phenomenon in our community. I mean, you look at Dr. Scholl's house, there's other houses, many examples, where there's fairly large homes on, on properties. And so it's not unique that this is still continuing. fairly large homes on properties, and so it's not unique that this is still continuing. I would echo the comments that if the zoning laws don't need to change, then we just enforce them as they are today. If they require change, then we need to look at what those parameters should be. But I'm pretty open-minded about it, but again, the thing that we love about the community is every house is different, and there's no two homes the same, and we like that aesthetic.
Okay. Town council, other questions?
I think Zach needs to respond to that one.
Well, I'm sorry, did Zach not respond? I'm sorry, Zach.
Yeah, no problem. I've got kind of a different perspective than some of you here. I'm the newest community member, I think, maybe not the newest resident, but certainly all of you on the call, I've been here much, much longer than me and my wife have been. So I've been through this in Chicago, I've been through this in the UK when I lived there. When the money starts coming in, I lived in Bucktown in Chicago ten years ago, and if I wanted to go back and buy the same lot, buy the same house that I lived in when I first purchased it, there really wouldn't be a chance for me to do that. And I think if, in this community, I love walking around and seeing all the large homes, I'm not against the homes. What I'm against is what that does to people like us, me and my wife, younger folks that just want to get out of the city, or move from the southern parts of Indiana up here to where the lake is. If the homes are predominantly huge like that, nobody's gonna be able to afford it that's in a position like I'm in. I wouldn't have been able to afford the house I'm in now. So that's the part that concerns me, it's the part, it's a part of the community that brought me here, is the tightness of the community, the fact that forty to fifty percent of the people around here live here full-time, most of my neighbors live here full-time. If the community started to shift in the direction where all it was was a bunch of multimillion-dollar homes and people traveling from Illinois in the summer, and that was it, I think this town would change dramatically, and I think, you know, you're gonna see a lot of people either leave or not want to come here to begin with. So I'm in favor of freedom, I'm in favor of people being able to purchase what's within the rules and build what's within the rules, but I think the town council has an obligation to make the rules what the town wants them to be. And I think, I personally feel like the majority of this town would want to keep the aesthetic, keep the lot sizes and the homes within a reasonable limit. That's my opinion on the subject.
Thanks, Zach. Okay, town council members, now, another question.
Bob, I would like to ask them, what do they think we could do to improve our town?
Okay, and we'll start with Stefano's.
Okay.
Thank you. You know, one of the key things I think we need to do for the town, just on an improvement basis visually, is clean up the streets, make them better. You know, we have, I go to work every morning, come back, and there's just a lot of brush on the side of the roads. I mean, that aesthetic, you know, yeah, it's old town, we're, you know, we're the town on the beach, but the streets can look a little cleaner in some spots, for one. I think that's, you know, beyond the beach issue, I think, the streets and how they're addressed.
Okay. Mike Johnston?
You know, it's, to what degree do you improve things? And I'm one who really, really enjoys our community, and I don't see a lot of deficiencies in it today, other than the things we've already talked about, infrastructure issues like sewers and the lake. I, for one, am very happy with the things that go on. Our roads are plowed, our garbage is picked up, our police force is very courteous, our volunteer fire department does a great job. I, quite frankly, would have a hard time saying, what would be the incremental improvement you would make to really make it significantly better than what it is today? And it's pretty darn good today. And so I'm a happy resident, to be honest with you.
Okay, Zach Neff?
I'm also a happy resident. One of the, I guess the only thing that comes to mind, I was a bit surprised when I first started getting involved in the town council meetings back four years ago. It seemed like there was a lot of headbutting within the town between various parties about all sorts of subjects, and it felt very political, it felt very angry to me. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to get involved in the parks board, because I think the more people, if half of the folks that were so upset were involved in something intimately with the community, they might change their mind a bit about why some decisions are made. So I think the council's done a great job so far of, you know, the website is significantly better than it used to be, you can go find information on there, whereas before, people would be mad and not know about why we made a decision, or why people made a decision, or why you guys made a decision, or the park board made a decision. Now, it's, you'd be hard-pressed to give me an excuse why you couldn't get that information if you wanted to go find it. So I just think that the communication within the community is getting much, much better, and now I'd like to see some of the involvement get better as well. So it'll just get folks to know each other a little bit better, and hopefully less bickering in the future.
And Anita Ruses?
Hi. One thing that came to mind immediately was grants, and we've done a good job getting grants, and I'll speak to Stop 24, which is fabulous and will only be better, and the street improvements that have been done, and I've been the recipient of those in the front of my house and the back of my house. So kudos for those two big jobs. Our police department with the new chief, once again, I think, will make a, just, I think just in terms of morale, in terms of enforcement where needed, I think that that will just make a difference in our town. I see our police chief drive by and wave. I think the one thing, and I sit on the park board, and I think that we can really do some beautification, which kind of makes me laugh, because it goes back to, I think, Mayor Daley, when he all of a sudden brought iron fences, were everywhere in Chicago. But I think that we can do a good job of, you know, putting some benches in our park, walking path, the tennis court by the community center. I really think that maybe that's something the park board can look at. We can, you know, like I said, do some planters, do a different walking path. That park and the playground, the tennis courts, pickleball courts, those are all really, really well-used. So I would say grants and probably just sprucing things up, otherwise the town's incredibly well-run.
Any other questions from the town council? I'll go ahead, then. I think, you know, one of the most divisive issues in the town, of course, has been our beaches, namely, who owns the beaches? I think another issue, again, related to the beaches, is the town's efforts to regulate construction of shoreline protection structures and the destructive effects they may or may not have on the beaches. So I guess I'd like to hear your opinions on those two things, mainly beach rights and the efforts by the town to regulate construction on the beach. And starting off, to be fair, would be Mike Johnston.
Well, you know, it's the beach rights, and again, now that the public trust has been resolved, and I'm assuming, Bob, you're talking about the expansion of rights on the beach. You know, we've existed for a very long period of time with the access that we have today to the beaches, and we've had, with exceptions, of course, good relationships with a lot of the homeowners on the beach. And it's a sensitive issue, and I think, as I understand it, they have their own lobbying group, and I think there's an effort to create a lobbying group on behalf of the town. I don't have a lot of the details on that, I think I'd like to have a chance to review that, get a better understanding of it before I make any comments about it. But we've lived in the environment that we've lived in for a long period of time, and so thinking clearly and thoughtfully about what those expansion of rights would be on the beach, I think, is critical. And still, by the same token, maintain a relationship with those homeowners that are on the beach. In terms of infrastructure, are you referring to the ladders discussion?
No, actually, just revetments, seawalls.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the seawalls, I don't know what the right answer is on that one, to be honest with you. I know that there's been a lot of history on the seawalls, there've been seawalls and there's no seawalls, and the erosion issues are varied, and I know there's been discussions with the DNR about that and what, and getting direction from them. I'd have to get current on that one again, too. I mean, it's been a while since I've really looked at it clearly, since I ran for office for town council. Clearly, there's a myriad of issues, and it's complicated and dynamic, and I think I would have to reserve any more time to think about it and chat with the town council members to get an idea, best idea of what is the right answers.
Okay. Zach?
I'm on the beach every single day. This morning, I'm on the beach, whether, if it's raining, I'm not, but otherwise, I'm down there, and I am for anything and everything that protects our ability to use the beaches as the state has mandated and decided already. So I think that decision's been made, and I think there's gonna be continued lobbying by groups to supersede that or get around that in some form or fashion. So I just, I'm just glad that our town is continuing to lobby against that and fight against that, and there's a lot of folks that I know have been down in Indianapolis working towards that. So as far as the revetments and the walls go, again, I'm kind of pragmatic about this. I don't want to see, you know, I don't like feeling the vibrations of the seawalls being pounded into the ground up here at my house every day, but I also don't want to see somebody lose their home into the lake. So I'm glad that the town is giving these emergency building permits to fix the walls. I think they need to be fixed, as long as they're fixed in a way where they don't have to be fixed in the future. So I don't want to, I just don't want to see us lose homes because of that, but I also don't want to have revetments sitting outside of the seawalls, boulders, rocks, things like that, that are sitting out in the public trust, that's gonna eventually, if not already, prevent us from walking up and down the beach, from all the way down to Michigan City up to Michigan, which you could do when I bought my home. Now, there's a bit limited, but, so I'm against the revetments to go beyond the natural ordinary high watermark with the seawalls that exist today.
Thanks, Zach. Anita?
I want to say kudos, first of all, to our building commissioner, to our building commission, and particularly to council member John Wall for being so present and so active in the beach matters since the Halloween storm of 2019, when things really seemed to really take a turn for the worse. I totally agree that homeowners should be able to do what they need to do to save their property. I know that Gunderson gave us an answer. I assume other people are aware of Gunderson in terms of where the natural ordinary high watermark is, but I don't see a big shift in lakefront people welcoming us to what is our beach, and I see more private signs than ever before, and that's something, again, that needs to be addressed. I don't like the things that happen to residents who want to go down to the beach. So, you know, again, I think being kind and just, the beach belongs to all of us, and again, I just think that we need to continue to regulate and continue to use our ordinances to the best of, the best way that they can be used to protect our beaches and our beachfront.
Anita, Stefano's?
Yeah, you know, I moved here in ninety-six, and I remember looking for houses, and there was no beach on the lakeside. This is a cycle. It's just, this isn't a first-time occurrence. This is a multitude of occurrences over centuries that has impacted the beaches along Lake Michigan. And so when I moved in, yeah, there's no beach, couldn't access the beach. Eventually, I used the beach. I want people to use the beach. I want people to be able to save their homes, but to have revetments and these seawalls that sort of jut out, like a land grab, I think, is a little overdone. And there has to be a little more stricter zoning for that on our end, and it's a time that's a land grab on the lakeside. I have it happen in front of me right now, where the individual's dumping sand on the other side of the seawall, and the other side of the seawall, he doesn't own, between twenty-nine and thirty-one. So, you know, I see it every day. I think there has to be some oversight, and, you know, yeah, you're within the rules, no, you're outside the rules. You need to save your home? Yes, save your home, but don't bend the rules. And that's the problem that's happening right now. The stuff I've heard from across the street, I won't go into it, but it's inappropriate. They feel they could bend the rules left and right, some individuals do, and that's a problem.
Thanks, Stefano's. One other question I have, one of the more controversial decisions, too, this year that the actually park board made was to remove the trash cans from the beach tops. I just quickly want to hear what your thoughts are on that, and I think we threw Zach this time.
Well, you better know my thoughts on it. That's not a fair question for me, is it? So actually, just to be fair, the decision was made by the council, and we agree with the decision. So I publicly agree with the decision already in our meetings. I think it's the right thing to do. I do understand why some people don't like the decision. I get it, and we've listened. We've spent almost a year now carrying these plans out. If you go up and down the beaches today, there are no trash cans and there's no bin enclosures, and that's the way it's gonna stay until beginning of the year, and we'll have new signs up, and we've got a board meeting on Tuesday to discuss it. So you can't convince me why you could get yourself to the beach with your family, cool or full or whatever, and a bunch of other food items, empty them all down there on the beach, and then not get home with them. It just doesn't make sense to me. It's just something, I think, all the, most parks that you go to when you travel to Wisconsin and Southern Illinois and downstate and Indiana, don't have trash bins out anymore because they just get overrun. And we saw some examples of that. I think part of it was due to COVID, part of it was due to the Fourth of July, I think there was a lot of extenuating circumstances, but I think it's driven us to make a very wise decision about having no trash bins at the beach tops.
Thanks, Zach. Anita?
Bless you, town council, for that town council meeting where the issue of trash came up and all. Bob, I think you were the first one who said, let's get rid of them, and everybody said yes. So great decision, and the park board's implementation has been, what I've seen and participated in, pretty flawless, and also very, very communicative with the town residents. There are people that don't like it, but the park board, again, was just tasked with what the town council said should be done. The communication and the speaks-to-communication, which I thought was great, it was in the beach, or we, you know, we have signs. I just, it was really done well, and I want to thank the town council. And I want to go back quickly to an issue about the beaches and people doing things that they shouldn't be doing, and I think that that's on us, that's on residents. You know what? If you hear things, and I find that things you hear aren't always what is the truth, but it goes back to the building commissioner, the building commission, and the residents. If you see something and you hear something, let somebody know. And again, it goes back to our police chief. You know, I mean, we have to help one another to keep the things the way they should be, and that's why we have ordinances to keep things in check.
Thanks, Anita. Stefano's?
You know, I didn't notice, well, I did notice that the trash cans were missing when I get down to thirty, but, yeah, every summer it tends to be sort of the drop-off zone, right? Every stop is full of trash. So I have nothing against removal of the trash at the stops. I think it'll keep the area clean, hopefully, and we'll see what happens.
Great. And Mike?
Well, you know, it's like anything else, no matter what decisions are made by the town council, there's gonna be a faction of people that aren't gonna like it, and that's just the way the world works. Lisa and I have never had a difficult time taking back the things that we've taken to the beach. It's never been an issue where we've actually accumulated more garbage than we took down. And so trash cans have never been And so, um, trash cans have never been something that's been a necessity for us. And I think we have to look at a lot of issues and, and people don't police themselves well. And I, and I think there has to be a certain responsibility on, on the part of individuals to do the right thing. And so, I mean, it's a decision the town council made. We have to respect it. Not the ways that we're going to like it. I mean, it's, there's a lot of issues that you guys make decisions about that people don't like. But that's the reality.
Great. Anybody else on the town council with any more questions? All right. Well, this meeting was basically just so the town council could get a feel for the candidates. Uh, the plan will be to have a special town council meeting on the 25th of January, at which time the, uh, town council members will vote. Um, and hopefully we'll be able to select a replacement for Nick Meyer.
Can Bob ask a question?
Yes.
What, what would be the process for how you're going to narrow down from four to, to two and one? How, how's that going to work logistically?
Chris, do you want to address how that works?
Well, ultimately I think the council has to make that decision and they, they will announce that Monday and adopt rules and procedures for that meeting. But ultimately there isn't any heightened, um, frankly, the, the town code and the state statutes don't provide for any more requirement than somebody to be nominated and then followed by a second and a majority vote and of the remaining members of the council. And in the event there's a tie, then Mr. Dufuniac is the, uh, king or queen maker in terms of, uh, casting the tying vote, the, the vote that would break the tie. So the, the exact process and procedure will be proposed and adopted by the council Monday. But that is what is, that is all that is required by code.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
Anybody have any other questions? Otherwise I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion, Bob.
I hear a second. I'll second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, one and all.